The Lawndale City Council Meeting will now come to order. May I have the city clerk take role of all the city council members?
Mayor Tim Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez? Here. Councilmember Kirney? Councilmember Reed? Absent. Mayor Pullen Miles?
All right. Now, may I have councilmember Pat lead us in the flag salute of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
May I now have Caitlin to come and lead us in inspiration, please?
Caitlin is going to do the inspiration for us.
Let's all bow our heads out of respect.
Ms. Hoffman, we're going to have Caitlin to do the inspiration for us. We really appreciate you, we love you.
All right, if someone else is going to do it?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Caitlin.
Oh.
Say that for the next councilmember because we're going to need you next council meeting.
Okay, hello. Okay, so I'm not really sure what to say, but what I would say was that we're all gathered here today and we're here to make a difference, hopefully, in the community. We're here to serve everyone in the community who has concerns and hopefully make it a better community in which we can all live in with, and which we're all happy. And yeah, thank you.
We will now have our public safety report from the sheriff's lieutenant, please.
Overall, crime is trending down. Okay, I said it right. We have had an uptick in burglaries, mostly from homes with open and unlocked front doors. Make sure you secure your homes when you leave the house. Yeah.
Would there be any comments made by the city council? Now, may I please have the city clerk provide a report to the city council, please?
There's nothing to report at the moment.
Nothing to report. Now, we open the floor to any public oral communications that would like to be expressed to the council.
Good morning. I'm Lenore Bemis. I reside in Lawndale. And my thing here today is to let you know, to let your children know, that you have got to preserve your history. And we have a historical thing here at Lawndale. If you came in, there was all kinds of cabinets with some old, old, old fate. So don't let your parents throw anything out. It's probably really old, and save it. And we do need help over there, so if you can't help, maybe if you've got nieces and nephews or other friends, please tell them we need help. Thank you.
Hello. So I come here as a concerned citizen. So I'm very excited to hear that the property located at 15801 Hawthorne Boulevard is now city-owned by Lawndale. And my only concern is that it's been vacant for quite some time now, and I do want to know what the council's plan is for the property itself. That's my own concern.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cruz, and I propose that Lawndale should build a swimming pool as well as a two-story library. Although we don't have a high crime rate, this can help us keep it that way. I believe that if we have these, more teenagers will have more activities to do and participate in their free time. Instead of doing anything that can lead to trouble, they can turn their energy into something positive. I propose we have a library as a two-story because Lawndale only has one library and not a lot of books, or most books, that some kids would be interested in. This library will help us create a safe place.
Thank you.
Morning, everyone. I'm David Sennable, and I propose we explore, we tell kids, our generation, about the expose program for police and firefighting because not a lot of schools, not teach, tell their kids about their expose program and what kind of opportunities they bring to you. Personally, I'm in the expose program, and I didn't learn it from my school. I had to learn it outside of school. And I feel like schools should thrive to tell kids about the expose program, about if they want to be a policeman or a firefighter, because we're going to be the next generation heroes, and I feel like kids that want to be those kind of careers should have the opportunity to start at this age.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sanil Sirajniran. I reside in Lawndale, and I propose that we allow 90 days for the public to submit their proposals to Lana and Hawthorne and Manhattan Beach. And I propose that we spring in a retail, like a restaurant or a hotel, to bring revenue for the city to, let's say, redo roads and for public safety in general.
Thank you. Would there be any more comments in the public before we proceed this hearing?
Hi, I'm Adrian Moutieris. I'm a developer that's interested in wanting to go into that property. I recently have spoken with community development director Sean Moore with no success. I am trying to bring in a use where we will have, you know, I don't think if you guys have heard this before, but we'd be using C containers as a form of restaurants, kind of like a food plaza that's similar by, in, I want to say El Suno, that's off Redondo Beach, no, sorry, wrong city, Sepulveda and Rosecrans. You know how they have the point, which is kind of like a food plaza there? Well, I kind of want to bring something similar here to that use over at that corner, because I feel like it's definitely going to be, sorry.
Sir, hello, that's already on the agenda, we'll get to that later.
Hello, my name is Abiba Bayta. I have a proposal for what we can use that land for. From what I've heard from everyone else that I've asked around with, the area where that plot of land is, is like, it's pretty busy and very heavily populated, so I propose that we put some kind of like...
Excuse me, could you repeat your name?
Abiba Bayta.
I'm sorry to inform you, but that's already on the agenda as well. We would like to proceed with this hearing. We'll talk about it later. Are there any new or different topics that would like to be addressed to the council before we proceed? Now, I will open the floor up to the city council members and any comments they'll have on the issues at hand.
I'd like to thank Lenore for bringing this to our attention. I think preserving our things that have some years behind them is very important because you cannot let go of the past, even though you've got to live in the present. Definitely, don't throw your stuff out. Keep it in your home, you know? Get a storage unit, something like that, those are pretty cheap. Just, because you never know, and it's not even about the money thing, it's just kind of like, has a lot of, you know, it might have sentimental value to you, to your family. And maybe if it's like a historical object, you could bring it to the, you know, the city council and be like, look, check out, check this out. Maybe they'll put it up or something. But yeah, I'd like to pass this to my colleague to my right.
I would now have city councilmember Sarah speak on the matters. Councilmember Lila?
I would like to thank Ms. Lenore, was it? Lenore, my bad. We should tell, we should tell, you know, our city to help preserve the history of Lawndale, because it is important to know where we come from and to know the history of our city, where we come from, how, you know, we built up. And I think that a good way to help preserve the history of our city is to tell our students, because that's the new generation of Lawndale, this is the new generation, Losinger, Lawndale, even Hawthorne. So Hawthorne City, sorry! But, no, in all seriousness, though, we do need to tell our students to help preserve the history of Lawndale, because it is important. And the best way to do that is to tell the next generation of students, and not just students, but all young people, you know? Even people who aren't, you know, young. So like, just anybody in general, we do need to tell people to, you know, preserve anything, you know, that might not seem that is very important, maybe like a little radio or a clock, anything important, because you don't know how much value that is going to have later on.
Thank you. I will now pass the mic to councilmember Shyoma.
No, that's the end of the council.
That's the end?
Yes. She's the city manager.
I do believe that interactions with the public, such as things like a swimming pool, is very important. However, I do think, coming back off of what councilmember Lila said, teaching and getting people, the young generation, to preserve their communities alone, starting with them, will automatically, like, start this chain reaction of generations who know how to take care of what they have. So if we do have that swimming pool, we do need to teach our younger generations to preserve it and take care of it. So, we're now moving on to H, beginning a discussion pertaining to the development of a city-owned property at 15801 Hawthorne Boulevard. May I please have a report from the director of community services?
Honorable mayor and city council, Steph Anne Mandocci, city manager, Mike Exto, director of community service, government of city owner property at 15801 Hawthorne Boulevard. As a project of the Budget Act of 2011, in order to protect funding for our core public service at local level, the California State Legislature approved the dissolution of approximately 400 revenue agencies in California. After a period of legislating, revenue agencies will official dissolve on February 1, 2012.
The property located at the southwest corner of Manhattan Beach and Hawthorne Boulevards, or real property located at 15801 Hawthorne Boulevard, was turned over to the Lawndale Successor Agency shortly after redevelopment agencies were dissolved. Successor agencies were established to manage redevelopment projects currently underway, make payments on enforceable obligations, and dispose of redevelopment assets and
Since the redevelopment agency properties were originally purchased with California State Redevelopment Agency dollars, the property must be sold and proceed transfer to the city government of finance. California Government of Finance.
To encourage interest in the property, the city must develop bid packages, solicit bids, and entertain development plans for the property located at 15801 Hawthorne Boulevard from qualified developers. During the bidding process, the city has the opportunity to suggest future uses for the property, which could be of recreational, retail, or some other commercial nature. In addition, the city has the opportunity to suggest a fair market price for the property to encourage quicker-than-usual sale of the property.
There is no funding required for this phase of the project. However, there will be considerable amount of staff time requirement to complete the bid passage. They will then distribute list of qualified bidders and review bid proposal, one formal bid or received by the city. Staff recommend that city council first discuss a timeframe for society bid for the department, one of the property. Second, discuss and identify six proportional use for the property, such as recreational, retail, or some other types of commercial development. And third, determine a fair market price for a property based on similar properties in the immediate area. Just to cue my report.
Thank you. Would there be any comments or suggestions or ideas coming from the city council on
So for the property plan, I think a swimming pool would be a good idea, except that we already have a swimming pool at a laundry park located in Lawndale. But I think the best idea would be probably like a food plaza, because it would make a lot of money that we can reinvest into the city.
Okay, so we did hear from the audience that someone was interested in buying the property in order to develop it, specifically Adrian. So I was just wondering, would you be willing to bring a copy of your bank account information, just to make sure that you are actually able to, you know, you are able to afford the property in order to develop it?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm willing to provide that and any additional documents you guys might require. Also, just to let you know, this similar product I want to bring in, we actually did recently open one up at Bellflower, and it's pretty booming right now. Like I said, I just want to make sure that, you know, I give London an opportunity to kind of bring in a different type of use for that, because I feel like with all the development projects coming in, you know, residential of the businesses, I want to make sure that with this use here, that we kind of do what we can to get people to want to spend more money in Lawndale instead of having to go to other neighboring cities to spend their money there and just keep all the tax dollars here. But again, I'm willing to provide that information and any other documents you guys need to help push this forward and hopefully convince Sean to let us go through the process to let this project in.
Would you be willing to put a percentage down payment or deposit?
Yes, I mean, just let me know an amount. I'm not quite sure of the specific dollar amount that the property is worth at the moment. I know it's currently, you know, was rated, not rated, but valued at, you know, several million, but like I said, depending on the percentage, I'll be willing to work with the city. I really want, you know, to bring this project forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have something to add from the community development department. The gentleman that approached Adrian, his project is inconsistent with the Hawthorne Boulevard plan. It does not allow for C containers or that type of architectural design. In addition, we've mentioned to the developer, the direction from council is to cite that property with a retail use, including the highest and best use, as the council knows. We recently hired a consultant that identified the property, the highest and best use was a hotel site with a restaurant. The property in question that we're discussing with the applicant, his type of use is more like a cafeteria-type uses, which if the council recalls, we ever entertained that and you guys shut that down, I just want to let you know ahead of time. And also, I want to bring to the city attorney's attention, you can't bring up items in pre-bid conference with, you know, Brown Act, you know, potential Brown Act issues, so we will definitely work with the applicant on the side and ask them to submit their, his bids accordingly. Thank you.
See you later, Adrian.
Thank you.
So, are there any additional comments before we proceed?
Mayor and city council members, I think we got very good feedback on what the property could be used for. What we primarily need feedback on now is number one, and we need to know what your timeframe would be to advertise and put bids out, bid packages out for the project, so staff can do their work.
Are there any ideas on the timeframe? So, I propose that we begin bidding winter of 2019, and by that time, by come spring of 2020, the bidder or the buyer has already been selected. That way, we can continue, not continue, but begin construction of the property in the summer of 2020, and hopefully have construction done by late winter or early February of
How about we advertise on September 1st?
September 1st of?
This year.
I just feel like we need to, we need to, I'm sorry, what? We do need, we do need to bring this project forward as soon as possible, because in order, I'm sorry, once we do bring this project forward, it will bring tax revenue to the city, which will help us with other projects.
Are there any comments on the matter?
Otherwise, we will get ready for September 1st.
I think the, I believe the city council, I think the city council has consensus on your proposal. Bidding and the process of the project will begin on September 1, 2019. Do we need a motion? What is the pledge of this body concerning the proposal?
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now, before we, now, before we proceed, is there any discussion, one last discussion from the council? I believe, I believe that the city council has come to a consensus on the matter. Bidding on the project and the progress of the project will begin September 1 of 2019. Let's begin a vote, one last time.
Call for the question.
Does motion carries with for approval and read absent?
Motion carries.
Now, mayor and city council members, we still have one other outstanding question on there, and we'd like to ask community development department to clarify what the property was appraised for, so we have an idea of what we're looking to gain from this property.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. The property of recent appraisal, several appraisals have been completed on the property, but the most recent has it pegged at $3.5 million. The retail, the sales price of the property is what we have it. And that includes all the structures on the site and the closure of the mobile home park, which now is vacant, and we've relocated those residents to other properties throughout Southern California.
So would council like to discuss the appraised value of $3.5 million as a sale price?
Do you guys agree? Do you guys agree? We agree on the sale price. We agree on the sale price. We have consensus on the sale price of $3.5 million.
Does we need a motion?
City attorney, do we need a motion on the matter?
Yes, a motion is needed.
So moved.
I second.
Unless there's any more discussion, I will now have the council vote.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask the city attorney's office, but I don't, before we take action, I don't know if public comment was allowed on this items before you took a vote on it. Just asking the city attorneys if you allowed a public comment. We have residents here that are interested in making comments on it before we take action.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item and proposal?
I feel like we should build a skate park, because whenever I go down to Lawndale, I see skaters destroying property, trying to do tricks and stuff. And I feel like it would be a smart investment to build a skate park, because all the skaters can move to that one area, and there will be less complaints.
Thank you for your input. Is there a council member that would like to continue? Since the motion has been seconded, we will now proceed.
Mr. Mayor, we have one other comment coming.
Hi, once again, my name is Sanil Sirajniran. I live in Lawndale, and I still, I'm going to say the same thing I said the first time. I still propose a hotel and a restaurant should be there to bring revenue for more public works and to fund the fire, the local fire department in the city.
We will now have a motion on the, we will now have another motion concerning the issue and matter at hand. Yeah, but yes.
The motion carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Mayor and city council members, the final piece to this puzzle here is we're looking for six uses for the property, and right now, we have notated three uses, and we want to make sure that we don't miss them, so here are the uses.
We have a skate park, swimming pool, or hotel. We have a skate park, swimming pool, or hotel.
You.
We have skate park, swimming pool, or hotel.
In your report, you stated that you had six uses, those were the out of the six. You said six uses, correct? We only heard three. We only heard three uses.
If council want to move with three, that's okay.
Maybe, maybe some members from the community want to come up and suggest a few more uses of the property.
I had also proposed a library.
A library has already, a library has already been suggested. We will save, we will save the issue of a hotel and its uses on Hawthorne, on fifteen eight oh one Hawthorne Boulevard. May we move on to the next, to the next item on the agenda? Council member Lila.
So, the library is controlled by the county, not the city, so we have no control over that, sorry.
We will put the project at hand of the property at fifteen eight oh one Hawthorne Boulevard on hold until the next meeting. If that's okay with the council? There's consensus to hold off and postpone this matter.
Council members? We need a motion to continue the, the item.
Okay, we need a motion to continue this item. The motion has been seconded? Is there any discussion? May I, may we now have the council vote?
The motion carries with four for approval and council member read absent.
So, mayor and city council members, just so we make sure that we have our details correct, we have a bid package date of September first to advertise the property for sale. We have a sale price of three point five million and we have three, four suggested uses for the property, skate park, swimming pool, hotel, and fast casual restaurant and a library. Does that council would like to add any more or move forward with those four ideas?
Thank you. So, may I please have the city manager provide a report to city council members?
There is a youth day parade on this Saturday. It is at ten AM and then before then, at nine AM, there is an open street, street bike ride or skateboard ride or whatever you ride. Basically, you get to ride on the parade route until the parade starts. That's all.
Thank you. Now, the city council has the floor to comment on the youth day parade.
I don't really have anything to say. I think it went pretty well.
Thank you. Council member Sarah.
I'm going to say we could put on a future agenda to change the theme of the parade because it's been the Pirates Parade forever and we need, we need to change it.
Council member Lila.
I just wanted to thank everybody here. Thank you, thank you to all the city staff and everybody here present for organizing this event, everybody who helped. It's been very informative and I wanted to thank you guys and I'll make sure to tell my fellow students about this event and hopefully they can participate in the following years.
Thank you. I don't have any comments on the youth day parade. I adjourn this meeting until the next scheduled meeting.
Lunch and certificate.